So seeing that the appointed time has arrived and that we have quorum, the chair opens up the Wednesday, October 16, 2024 meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, 6:30 p.m., being held here at Mashpee Town Hall. We'll call it Meeting Room 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. At this moment, we're being broadcast live on local channels 18 and 1072, streamed live at Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov, channel-18. So I'm calling the public portion of the meeting to order. The first order on the agenda, the first item, is executive session. Pursuant to General Law Section 30A, Section 21A, 3, the chair declares that discussing the following matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board, and that matter is Southworth Mashpee Properties versus Town of Mashpee Planning Board, Massachusetts Land Court, case number 24, MISC 000327, Prenz, HPS. This is per Mass. General Law, Section 30A, Section 21A, Section 3. So the chair would entertain a motion by roll call vote to go into executive session for this matter and then coming back to public session afterwards.
Exactly what I said. So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll go by roll call vote. Karen?
Yay.
Yes.
Michael? Mary? Yes.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Rob? Okay. So now we're in executive session. So now we will start broadcasting.
Okay. So anyways, I think we're ready to start.
Yeah.
Our return to public session. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for waiting. We have a public hearing at 7:10 and 7:20. The 7:20, is anybody here for the 7:20? Okay, all right. It might be a while, so what happens is that the 7:10 one might run over and we just keep continuing it. So I'm sorry about that. And I'll let every, I'll do it formally, but I am going to recuse myself from the 7:10 and Michael Richardson, the vice chair, will take over. But right now, we're returned to public session. I'd like you all to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. To the flag by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. In your packet, Michael, do you have the public hearing notice?
I'm looking for it right now because I just got the packet. Application.
You don't have the public hearing notice with you, Chris, do you?
No, no.
It's not here?
No, that's.
No, we don't have it. I wondered why it wasn't here. Do you have it, Mary?
I, I don't. Tom? Do you have the public hearing notice for the 7:10 public hearing? We cannot find it, sir.
After the stuff I had for the executive session. And it's called.
Oh, here it is.
Your minutes were the first item on your agenda.
Because it's not a continued, it's a new.
A new.
Okay, so I'm gonna, on that.
Have you voted on your minutes yet?
No, we haven't voted on the minutes, but the time has arrived. I am going to recuse myself because I am a directive letter. And hand it off to Michael.
So was it, was it in the packet?
Yes, it was.
I don't.
I didn't have it.
I didn't have it. I have the Watson, the second one.
No.
It's in drive.
The applicant is right behind it. Application for a special permit on the man.
The application and that's it.
Should be after the minutes from the last 18.
Yeah. Did you vote on the minutes, Mary? Because that's was the next thing on the agenda.
I'm not voting on the minutes, I'm leaving. We will vote on the minutes after the public hearing.
Vote on the minutes after the public hearing, okay.
Okay.
All right, well, if you can help me.
You're gonna, you're gonna read the public notice.
All right.
And then you're gonna go over the application.
And read the application?
Well.
You're gonna read, you're gonna read the agenda. Read the public?
Yeah, this one.
You're gonna read that.
Mike, you're gonna, you're gonna hearing by reading the public hearing notice.
All right, so I guess it's. It's time to open the public hearing. Mass Planet Board Public Hearing Notice. Under the provisions of the Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9 of the Mass Planet Board, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 16th, 2024 at 7:10 PM. It's actually 7:15 PM at the Mass City Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North to review on remand from the land court. A special permit application by Joel Jancaro to construct a 6,000 square foot building to be used for storage in a roof structure pursuant to Section 174-24C1, comma 174-25G6 and 17482A4 and 17445.6 of the Mass City zoning by law at 31 Asshument Road and 474 Main Street. The public hearing. Applicant. Joel Quintero by Christopher Corain. 31 Asshument Road, 47 Main Street. Special permit on remand from the court to construct a 6,000 square foot building to be used for storage in a roof structure pursuant to Section 174-24C1, comma 17425G6, 17482A4 and 174.45.6 of the Mass City zoning law. You're up.
And just so the board knows, the only thing we have is the special permit application itself and more copies of the previous project. No, no new architectural or site plan drawings.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. For the record, attorney Christopher Corain. As you may recall, this project on Asshument and 130 was brought to you as a prospective plumbing supply store. There were some concerns regarding traffic. The board denied the project by a three in favor and two against vote. The applicant decided that to take his right to appeal that project. Did so within the 20-day appeal period with the Massachusetts Land Court. Once town council got involved, I reached out to town council to see if there was a way for the parties to find a use that would be acceptable to the board based on their concerns. And we did have, we do have a prospective user of the building who wants to use it as a storage in a roof structure. That person has a small vintage car collection that he would like to store in the building. So there'd be no, it's no retail sales. There is no automotive, we're not asking for any repair work. We're not asking for any dealership. We're not asking, it's just simply the storage of the vehicles. There's less than 15 vehicles at the moment that would need to be stored in there. So there's no traffic. As I said, it's not a retail, so there'd be no traffic in and out. One of the big concerns with the prior use was the potential for large trucks coming back and forth to the property. That would not happen. As I say, this is a private owner who would be, as I said, using the storage facility. The cars, you know, go to shows, so at times there may be, be trailered out of there. They have a motorhome that does that with a small, with a trailer for about two cars. But otherwise, you're not looking at delivery trucks and things of that nature, which was the concern prior to. As noted, the building is exactly the same as what we've proposed, 6,000 square feet. The only thing I would note that would be different is there's no showroom, there's no need for offices. So we, we'll be eliminating those things from the plan. It'd simply be the storage and the, and a bathroom. So that would, that would.
What did you, excuse me, Mr. Corain, what did you just say, storage and what?
A bathroom, bathroom.
Oh, okay.
Bathroom, yeah, so.
It has Prescott's name on it.
Yeah, that should be changed too, because they're not, they have found another building. So, so we can revise out of the board concern, we condition that we amend those plans in accordance with the representation that there's no showroom, there's no offices, simply just a 6,000 square foot storage with a bathroom. And changing the architecturals to show that as well and removing the EJ Prescott. So again, we were hoping that this is a solution that's palatable to the board. Again, the biggest concern from the board members who voted against it was the, was the traffic, was the large trucks coming in and out. None of that will be part of this proposal. It's a private individual who, you know, and no retail, no automotive repair, no automotive sales. So it's just storage, so with that, I'm happy to.
And it's storage in a roof structure.
In a roof structure.
Which is a zoning issue.
Correct, yep. We're not planning on storing anything outside. So we've asked for a storage in a roof structure.
Mr. Corain?
Yes.
The, the building is exactly the same as a septic shop.
Correct.
You're saying, will there still be a fence in the landscaping and everything will stay the same?
That would all stay the same.
So we're not going to be really looking at the building? There's nothing going to be stored outside?
Correct, no storage outside.
And it's, it's one, one person who owns these 50 cars.
No, no, like 15, 15, not 50.
Oh, gosh.
Less than 50.
That's what I heard, 50. I guess I need a hearing aid or something.
Not 50.
And how often would he be pulling these cars out for shows?
Oh, I don't know, maybe once a month, once every couple of months. I'm not 100% sure.
Everybody in the neighborhood will be out down there watching to see the cool cars.
But as I say, it's not going to be on a daily basis.
Okay.
This gentleman has a, has, has his own job, you know, a real job too, so.
Are you gonna have any fuel storage?
Is he gonna resurface the whole area like before or less?
That is the way it is shown on the plan.
Can, can, you're gonna have to change that. As the plan says, outdoor storage in a gravelled area and more outdoor storage on a lot of asphalt. I mean.
I mean, we can remove.
We talked about that.
We can remove all the references to the outdoor storage, but, you know, the site plan. But, you know, the site plan itself, the, the impervious surface meets all your requirements. So certainly, we can relabel it.
But it's an expense to the applicant. Why would he build all that asphalt for no reason?
Well, I guess that's his, you know, that'd be his call.
Doesn't want to pay for plants.
Right, I mean, we're trying to make it as simple as possible. You know, this obviously went to court. We're trying to bring it back to the board without having to, you know, it went through all the peer review. So we're trying to keep it as simple as possible. But again, I think the biggest...
Are you gonna have any storage, storage, fuel storage on the site?
Just a limited amount of fuel storage, you know, for, you know, be able to move the cars, you know. But nothing, you know, no, I don't think, I think you have to keep a little bit in there just so the cars don't break down. But there would be no, you know, we're not keeping oil tanks or things like that in there. You know, we're not going to be gassing the cars up. Again, there's no service proposed, any service by the, my understanding is that if he needed to service the cars, it'd be done off-site.
Mike, I totally support the, the new proposal. My fear is that, and it's a standalone proposal as you're proposing. My fear is that in five years, two years, one year, they come back for a modification that says, "We want trailers and boats and everything out in that open outside storage space." What provisions are you proposing to prevent just that?
Well, this board. I mean, you have the, you have the right to deny that petition. I, I can't just do it. So I would have to bring a modification before this board under a certain section of the bylaw that may or may, you know, if there's a provision that allows that. And this board can tell me, say, "Mr. Corain, you know, we were here two years ago, five years ago. We were concerned about you coming back with outdoor storage. We think it doesn't meet the spirit and intent of the bylaw, and we're not going to allow it." I can't just do it. Everything, basically, everything that can be done in any one of your commercial or industrial districts needs to come, needs to get a special permit, whether it's before this board or before the zoning board of appeals. So if I were to ask for a change of use, somebody would have to review it. So it can't just be done willy-nilly.
Mr. Corain, are there gonna be bodywork there?
No.
No, he said no.
Nope, nope, nope. Storage only.
Does the applicant have, have they given consideration to using like eco-friendly asphalt, pervious surface for their expansive driveways? And in their landscape plans? Have they looked at native plants and grasses and all the sorts to kind of mitigate any environmental impacts?
Sure. Yeah, I can ask the engineer, Rob Dwar from Bracket, can address the, you know, any of the landscape plans. I know we, the bylaw requires us to keep certain things, natural vegetation. You know, I don't know what type of asphalt they may, may or may not use, but I'm sure that, you know, they can certainly explore that if it's a concern of the board.
May I say something? I think it would be helpful to, because we're, I think we're all very familiar with the original plan. If you could say, show us where you might be deviating from the original plan.
He has given us exactly the same plan dated last February.
So the only devi...
Which I think is something you ought to think about.
The only deviation is the stuff that's gonna be there.
Yeah, basically, the inside of the building is the only deviation.
Oh, that I understand, but nothing on the outside?
Nothing on the outside as proposed. I suppose if, if the board...
You gotta get rid of the gravel storage area.
Well, the, the labeling of the gravel storage area will go away. So the board can certainly condition any approval that there's no outdoor storage, and the plan should reflect that. But I guess I'll turn over to Rob on the, those questions.
Robert Dwar here with Bracket Engineering on behalf of the applicant. So a good portion of the area there, if you see in the orange areas that's shaded in the plan, they will be disturbed as part of the construction process, but will be restored to its native state. Once the, you know, once the site is stabilized and construction is complete, they'll be allowed to renaturalize. The other limited areas, really, there's almost no landscaping. We are proposing a handful of trees. I believe there's seven, 11 trees to be planted. And those can be, we had not... We hadn't landed on a species there, but I mean, that can be conditioned as part of this in terms of species, you know, native species, red oaks, something like that. In terms of, the rest of the landscaping really is only in the area around the rain garden. Much of that would just be probably maintained lawn just for, you know, maintenance of the area. In terms of asphalt, we are proposing, in areas that are proposed to be paved, just traditional asphalt. It does flow down to conveyance well to a rain garden to allow some green infrastructure for stormwater treatment. Generally speaking, pervious pavement has a tendency to clog in this area with sanding and salt from winter without a lot of maintenance and constant vacuuming of it with, you know, large vac trucks.
It's also not recommended because of our nitrogen problem.
Exactly. It doesn't provide the treatment that you get.
Impervious to rain gardens.
So we'd like to go, as we said, you know, impervious pavement to the rain gardens. Even gravel areas, while it does provide a small amount of infiltration, generally, once you have your base cores down, your subbase, really doesn't permeate at all. It generally runs off.
Would, would, would you consider, instead of that gravel, just making that a grass area? I mean, it seems silly to have the gravel out there.
I mean, I don't...
Will affect your drainage and...
I mean, I don't, I don't think if the board were to condition it, I don't think...
It'd look a lot better with that.
I don't think it's gonna make or break this project.
Save you money, a lot of gravel, you don't have to buy.
Right. I'm guessing if the board were...
You gotta buy a lawnmower, though.
If it was really a sticking point for the board...
Turn it into a flower garden, you know? I mean, a pollinator garden, take care of that.
So again, if, if the board was, you know, if it really was something they were really pushing for, we're not going to, you know, oppose that type of a condition.
Is there a change in the signage or size of the signs or anything like that?
There may not be a need for a sign at that stage of the game, as far as identifying the, the building. Like, there's no business going in there, so to speak, so.
Can you show us where the fence will go around this property?
Sure, I'm just gonna take the mic with me.
Just pull it up.
So the fence was something that had been discussed. Was there a plan with the fence?
Just a marked-up plan.
Yeah, because the fence essentially went across from the, the corner here, and Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, but the corner of the building, across to the front, you know, and it was, because of historic, it was a solid, flat, you know, stockade-style fence, wood fence across the front. And then as we came across the rear outside of the historic district, it was just going to be kind of, generally just off the pavement surrounding the area with a gate across the driveway.
And then the fence in the front there?
Across here?
Yeah.
This was, I believe we had discussed a chain link fence across the front more for keeping people out of the rain garden area. There were, I know there was some concern about children kind of playing in that area. But I think that some of that was up for debate. Some, when you're standing on a Asshument Road, the way the grade drops off, and you don't really particularly see into the front. And again, and there's also the buildings, the offices on the corner here restrict any view into the site from Asshument Road.
Okay, the way I remember it, there was, I thought it was a stockade fence or something in the front there that was gonna conceal the, the pipes and things outside, the outside storage.
Well, there is no outside storage.
I know there isn't now, but I'm asking, is there going to be that fence that was planned to be there? Or are we gonna see the building completely?
No, the fence, the fence is proposed, so we can keep the fence there if it helps with the visual.
I don't see the fence on the plan, sorry. You see a limit of work and a, and a hay bale and silt fence line, but not a fence line.
Yeah, there is no fence shown on that plan.
Right.
Yeah, I think we had...
You did show one on a previous...
Yes. It was on the previous plan.
For the record, it was, it was a mark, it was a markup.
Yeah.
That turned to a chain link.
I'm not saying that you need to ask for it, members of the board. I'm just saying that's the only difference.
The historic commission, they wanted a, a stockade fence across the front.
Correct.
And that did show on a previous plan.
Yeah, I did believe there was, as Mr. Peschek said, there was a marked-up plan that showed what, where the fencing would be.
Right, I think that would be desirable.
Yeah, we have no objection to...
Do we know where that went? Because we probably need it for the record. Maybe I'll add it to whatever you deliver for the final approval.
Sure, we can provide that, a copy of that. I don't know what, we provided all these things. I don't know what happened to all the originals.
I have my, I have my copies.
Right.
So you, you actually gonna add the fence, is what you're saying, to this plan?
Yes, we can certainly do that. You could, certainly, the board can make a condition that the fence be added to the plan prior to any, you know, building...
Prior.
Yeah.
The fence shall be the same as proposed with the former use. Septic shop.
I'll only make one comment, Mr. Chairman, that when, in the last episode, when we did talk about a fence, it was a gate, and then I just said, asked to put a light at the gate, if you remember, Bob, that we had talked about, just put a light at the gate so nobody drives up to the gate without any...
Absolutely.
You know, perhaps, or, or have something reflective, just for safety. So if you're gonna put an exterior light somewhere, that there'd just be something near the gate. I would imagine if you have a gate, if you have a fence, you're gonna want a gate, and...
And the gate could have reflective tape on it.
Correct, right.
And there is a, there is a gate proposed, so. And that is shown on the plan.
But it would be a, what do you call it, a stockade fence or something that's solid, as opposed to a chain link?
Just across the, from 130, I thought that was...
That's the front.
That, that's the front.
Right, that was what historic required.
Right.
And there was gonna be a fence where the storage was on the outside.
Right, and there's no, right, there's no storage now.
And then I could've swore we went from there to a chain link around the, where the swale is.
Yeah.
And with, with one light at the gate.
Gate, one light at the gate.
Right, yeah.
And, and those were marked up on a plan, and I could provide those plans, you probably have...
Yeah, we have copies of them as well. That's not a problem.
You know, it might be a minor thing, but the idea of reflective tape rather than a light might be less annoying to the neighbors.
Yep, we're happy to, if that's what the board prefers. I don't think there's any issue with that.
Yeah.
Karen, any more?
It's all.
Tom? Bob?
Well, I still think they ought to eliminate a whole bunch of that asphalt that's serving no purpose there collecting rainwater.
Well, I think if, last time we met, we didn't raise the issue like that last time. I'm not sure why we should raise the issue this time.
Well, because it was used for outdoor storage last time.
It was gonna be...
But again, as I said, if the board were to condition it on removing what's labeled as outdoor storage this area right here, you know, again, I don't think that the applicant would have any issue with that.
Well, in the plan, this area was indicated as outdoor storage.
Well, yeah, we're taking all of this out. All of the, any reference to outdoor storage is gone. There's no outdoor storage. And again, the board wants to remove this.
Yeah. I would, I would certainly propose that for the board to consider and add as a condition. Yep. And regarding the suggestion of reflective tape versus a light, I would propose that there would, the rest of the board consider that as well.
Or a reflective sign.
Yeah, a reflective sign type of thing.
Sure.
So those two things are...
And/or a reflective sign.
Would there be a provision in there that the owner could not go to it, you know, in the middle of the night, or?
Well, I mean...
Something like that.
Why? Stop if you know that.
Right, I mean, it's this, this building. If there was an emergency or something like that, why couldn't he go? Again, he's not, it'd be no, no different than anybody else going, you know, if it was a home, and people can go to their homes at midnight or whatever. I don't think there's, he's not, again, there's no, there's no deliveries, there's nothing like that happening where you'd be looking at gigantic trucks or things like that. I mean, if he goes to a show and puts the car in at 11 o'clock, you know, I don't think that that should be restricted. It really shouldn't be any disturbance. It's one, one vehicle taking these cars.
So the, two conditions we would like to have?
Well, the third condition, we discussed earlier, that some wording on the plan, that this is not all the open area paved or otherwise, is not intended to be for outside storage.
Storage, right.
All right, so that would be the third condition I, I would see.
So which, which three do we have?
Convert the gravel area to a lawn area. Eliminate the light.
And make it reflective sign.
And have more reflective tape or, or a sign, reflective sign. And, and then the...
Show the fence.
Show that, yeah, oh, yeah, show the, the stockade fence as previously had been shown, and to make a statement on the plan that open outside areas are not intended for storage.
As a, just one clarification on the removing the gravel. I know Mr. Oakley had mentioned, would you prefer like a naturally vegetated state as opposed to lawn areas?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And also...
Really, you could turn it into a really beautiful pollinator garden. I mean, we've got volunteers that'll go in there and plant a lot of nice stuff, and you could be doing good for the butterflies and the bees.
And that would be, what, sort of naturally, natural state.
Have some come back with a new plan.
I just wanted to...
Attractive thing.
We would have some come back with a new plan, or not?
Yeah.
The other, the condition I brought up in the beginning was the natural vegeta, the native grasses, plants, shrubs in, in the landscape design.
Yeah, I think they responded that they would do that, right?
Yes, yeah.
I just want to make sure that's...
That's fine.
With the exception of the small area, that would just be typical fescue-mowed lawn around the rain garden area. You know, and a good portion of that area, if that gravel was to be removed, I mean, that would not even require disturbance from its natural state. You know?
Well, yeah, you, you wouldn't do anything to it, just leave it.
We wouldn't cut it, we wouldn't clear it, just to...
Just leave it as is.
Plant some more flowers.
You could do that too.
There would be a little bit of, you know, redirection of that swale, so some, you know, a small portion may be cleared just to handle that, but.
Sounds good.
Now, what are you planting in the swale, it's in the, in the rain garden, is it gonna be glar, grass, or is it gonna be?
Yeah, it's probably going to be.
Garden and shrub types.
Yeah. Cause it is just a conveyance well and not, we're not expecting, the treatment is going to be coming from, you know, from the rain gardens and the four bay itself, so. We wanna be able to just make sure it's easily maintainable, there will be a couple of cobble check dams as well in this well, just to slow down flow.
And there should be a note probably that about the maintenance of the grass, then you should keep it at least four inches to keep it healthy. We've got that in some of our other special permits, even Stuart Bernstein's got that, his permit for this building.
I don't know, maybe that was part of the O and M.
Yeah.
There is some, there is some verbiage in there.
We do have an O and M plan. There's an O and M plan.
Oh, there is?
There is.
Where is that?
Is that what he say?
There's an operate, O and M for the, for the ma, the stormwater, so.
It's included in the stormwater report that was originally submitted.
You mean, the heavy thing at the bottom of this box?
Do you have a copy of it with me tonight?
Got it delivered today? Is that what we're talking about?
It is.
That's it?
Yes.
Please find the page so.
If not, we can certainly.
Write this permit.
Add it.
Does anybody want any of these outdated? I've seen them all before. But they dropped off four more sets today.
For, for this?
Oh, no, I had the ones from the previous project, so, but we didn't have anything new, you know, like, talking about Chris about, you know, like, sure you want all that?
These outdated or updated?
These are dated last February.
So they're gonna have to be updated based on the conditions that are.
Has to be updated.
Here, I don't need them in.
Take a look, they, they have a lot of.
He can have the architectural plan just for old times' sake, it's still got.
Is there anything else, anybody else got? Anything else that you can take up?
I have them stacked up about this high.
Heads up, guys, we're in a middle of.
Tom, when did you get all those documents, today?
These are just, they're the same plans that have been throughout this whole, they're just copies of whatever. They're copies of whatever has already been provided to the board, so it's not new information. All right, so we're all clear, you guys come back with a modified plan based on what we've asked? We can do that, or the board can condition it?
Nah, let's do it. Is that one, we can have a date on it to refer to rather than.
Well, you can condition receiving that later, too.
Right.
Just receive it and I can review it on your behalf before they receive a building permit.
That work for everybody?
Well, but I mean, you, unless there's a dated plan in the special permit decision, then you don't know what it is you're referring to. The building inspector's gotta see the right date on the plan, so let's do the plan and then come back and write the permit based on the plan. It's the way we've done it before, at least in my day.
Do you wanna take a, is it proper to take a vote so you don't have to have another hearing in that regard?
I think it's proper, but conditions.
Make it that, that there, it's conditioned upon doing a revised plan to be checked by the consulting engineer.
I'm suggesting as a revol, revised plan with a revised date, because this plan is dated February of 2004, which doesn't make any sense for a project delivered today.
The revised plan would have a revised date on it, absolutely.
And I would also suggest there's no harm in keeping the hearing open until next time, and just in case, cause they're gonna present you a revised plan, and that's new information that would, should come into a public hearing.
What's the feeling of the board, what do you wanna do?
Keep it open, let's see the plan and then close it out.
Okay, so we'll leave, leave it being open until, we had set a date now or not?
I'll have a draft decision.
He may not have to meet, if, once the engineer.
Okay.
See how small the nuance is again?
We'll leave a public hearing open, pending the receipt by Ed of the revised plan and signing off.
Well, we need to get a public hearing date, even though it might not have.
No, we just continue this.
Continue to your next meeting, you gotta specify a time.
Continue the hearing.
We don't close the public hearing.
We're not, we're just continuing, we need a date, don't we?
Yes.
When is your next date, so what's the first Wednesday of November? You got a calendar?
The fourth, no.
I say the seventh, sixth.
Yeah, sixth, November sixth.
Day after election.
November.
Right.
Sixth at, you wanna say seven ten?
Yeah, I think most we continue the public hearing to November sixth at seven ten.
Do you wanna take public comment before you're continuing, in case there may be other things that?
Yeah, sure. I postponed.
Hey, that's what the public.
I gotta have you talk, sorry.
You're a glutton for punishment.
Right, all right, no, hey, I don't wanna have to be back in court, you know. So what was, what was the motion, Ed?
Open it up to public comment.
Public hearing.
After a public comment.
So delay that continuation.
Delaying that, I already said that.
There's a few people in the audience, is there someone who wishes to speak at public comment relative to this hearing?
Up there and state your name and address.
My name is Michelle Brum, I live at 96 Old Colony Drive.
Speak, if you could speak a little louder, just so we make sure we hear what you're saying.
Michelle Brum, I live on 96 Old Colony Drive, which is just off of Ashumet, across from this entrance. I just have, is this property gonna be sold to this gentleman, or is this a lease?
I don't know, doesn't matter legally.
Okay, so my second question is, if he decides, if he decides to sell it, or it changes to another lease, would all of these conditions go with the next tenant?
Yes, they go with the, they go with the land.
They go with the property.
All right, and a couple of my neighbors thought that maybe the reflective sign, maybe to like lamp posts or something on either side of the driveway, like other homes have, might be nicer.
It'd sort of be sitting out in the middle of nowhere, though, I mean. You'd rather have the light bulbs than just a, something only.
That street is not well lit at all, there's like no lighting down that street.
That's something to address with the Public Works Department, or the Town Streetlight Committee.
That was just a question.
Yeah. Cause I mean, then they'd put up a real streetlight for you if that's what you need over there. Probably best at the corner of Old Colony and Ashumet, that's most useful at intersections.
Yeah. Okay.
But then, I don't know, then.
No, it's a, it's a good comment.
Parkman's gonna be mad about that, he's learning at his house.
And it's nice if they don't put all that asphalt, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And plant flowers.
Understood.
Except you can't see it because it's behind a fence.
Right, but it still impacts the environment.
From a safety point of view, having a light at Old Colony, that's where the school bus picks up the kids, so I, I couldn't imagine, you know, lights committee saying no to, no to that, but, you know.
Hey, maybe we can put a condition on that says they have to pay for a streetlight up the corner of Old Colony and Ashumet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, Kevin, didn't you mention, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm used to your father, I mean, Chris, didn't you say it's going to be sold?
That's the, the plan is to sell, assuming it gets the permits and things, all those moving out.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak?
Here you go.
I'm Leonard Partnitz, I live at 2 Ashumet Road, I'm one of the butchers to this project. I just have one quick question, I, I was wondering about the, was that answered in the beginning, about the same footprint that you had for the other project, previous project? The other was the entrance exit, and now I know, but I, I was questioning myself, my wife and I, about entrance exit and, and the footprint, so that's been answered. The other one is very simple, the, the north side of that office, entranceway to the office, that goes into their parking lot. Just north of that parking lot, there's a, a depression in the ground, what is gonna be done with that? Cause it goes from a, a main street of 130, it's, it's a deep, like a hole there, I don't know, is that the swell that you're talking about?
Let's pull out a site plan so we figure out what we're talking about here.
It, it looks like a runoff, you know.
Yeah, it looks like a swell.
And it's been there forever.
I remember as a kid, it was always there.
Yeah, it's always there.
I was just gonna say it.
No, it, it borders the property.
Yeah, it borders when you.
It's, it's at the end of a property, it, I think, it's always been there.
You're talking more up on this side?
Yeah, between that landscaping place and that wood place or whatever.
Yeah.
It's like a little, gully like. I, I was just wondering what's gonna be done with that, is that fill in?
This looks like they're, they're filling in because the rain being raised, and this is where there's a hole. Right over here, that's very deep, and runs home from the road, it's a deep gully.
Yeah.
The adjacent property is basically like storage of mulches and stuff.
Mulch and stuff, yeah.
And so they, they go right here, and it looks just a, a veins of water, you know.
No, I was just wondering about that, that depression. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I know, I have one more coming up. Good evening.
Hi, well, that's much better, I won't say I listened, and all your points that you raised, all the little bit, I call them alterations or fixing, were perfect. I came with a list, but you answered all of them, so for this, for once, thank you, thank you all. All right.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, so let's get a motion for.
I made my motion to continue this public hearing to November sixth at seven ten.
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate your time and consideration. Well, we get, we get Mary back in, do we?
Yeah.
Bye, Kevin.
Is Mary there?
Yep. I was actually working. I got, I figured out how to connect to the internet in this building. I brought my work computer. Okay.
Okay, you're on for next.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty.
Okay. Seeing that the appointed time, so will we convene, if people wanna talk, you're welcome to stay at Town Hall, just go out into the lobby. Hi.
I'm curious who you all are, thank you.
Okay. Okay, this is for Watson Drive.
That's, I'll just put that in there, that's why I, I kinda put it right as you did.
I'm gonna open up the public hearing, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:20 public hearing to review and vote on the board's recommendation to town meeting regarding the proposed acceptance by petition of the layout of Watson Drive as a public way. For the record, the chair will read in the public, the public hearing notice into the record. Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 16th, 2024, at 7:20 at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to review and make its recommendations regarding the proposed acceptance by petition of the layout of Watson Drive as public way, as shown on plans entitled, quote, "Road Taking Plan Watson Drive", in Mash, end quote, in Mashpee, Mass., Barnstable County, dated January 23rd, 2024, and prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, which layout has been filed in the office of the Town Clerk for action at the town's October 21st, 2024 Town Meeting. This notice was submitted by Chair Mary E. Wagon, Mashpee Planning Board, publication dates were Friday, September 27th, 2024, and Friday, October 4th, 2024. So, Tom, do you wanna take us through this?
Well, you all have a copy of the road taking plan in your folders, they're eleven by seventeen, there's the little layout of Watson Drive, Watson Drive is familiar, is right off of Old Barnstable Road. You turn off of Great Neck Road towards the schools, and it's right on your right there. It's part of the Quashnet Valley Country Club development originally. Some details, but that's Ed's stuff. Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, if there's anything that Ed sees that.
So this was by petition? Right, this is by petition.
By petition, it's a town, town meeting article by petition, yes.
And our job is to, is to have a public hearing and then make a recommendation to town meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Any board members have any questions on this?
No.
I'm gonna go to, before I open it up to the public, I'm gonna go to our board engineer, Ed, do you have any questions? Or comments, sorry?
I've, I've, Madam Chair, I've never seen this plan, wasn't aware that it was being presented tonight, didn't, didn't see that on the agenda, but.
Do you wanna look at it for a little bit?
Well, the town is, is planning to take this over, excuse me, make this as a, a public way, it's accepting all the drainage facilities, and what's not here is there's locations, it looks, looks like of catch basins. And so I don't, I don't know if it's feasible to add that information, the catch basins are listed here, but I, I don't even know the status of the performance of those, I don't mean to throw any doubt on anybody's mind, cause it may be operating and, been operating for years, just fine. I don't know when it was built. It looks like these were, these plans were prepared at the beginning of the year, and I guess it's gone through a number of steps to get to this point. I would certainly, if, if the petitioners, excuse me, the, the budding property owners have petitioned the town, I, I wouldn't say that there's any main reason to not accept it. I would normally ask for a little bit more detail, but I don't know what's been typical for the town to get for, for a street acceptance plan, but it, it's got the legal meets and bounds, it's got the legal description, other information here in general. I would, I guess I would just have to say the driveways are shown, all the dri, at least, it looks like all the driveways are shown on the site, so as long as DPW doesn't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it.
I guess I was gonna look for Ed's.
Recommendation.
Input, yeah, in terms of like, stormwater management or infrastructure, but um.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, the plan doesn't show the stormwater infrastructure.
It doesn't show any of the infrastructure, so the water lines, anything. It, there's obviously a hydrant on the site, there's water lines on the site, you know.
Those aren't normally on taking plans, though, road taking plans are usually just the road layout and any easements we need.
Correct, so road taking plan has the legal meets and bounds and the easements in it? I would just like to know, is there, in the drainage easements, there's, there's several drainage easements shown here, are there drainage facilities in the drainage easements?
What are they, yeah.
Right, that's all.
Not all of them are next to the little dots that are, we assume are catch bases.
Correct, so.
See what you're saying.
It'd just be nice to know what the town's accepting, I would think Catherine at DPW would wanna know. In fact, I, if I was advising Catherine, I'd recommend that it be inspected, too, but, you know, you know, I, I haven't. If there was any major problem with this roadway, I would imagine you would, you know, have, have heard something by now. So I don't anticipate there's any issue, I just would love to have gone to look at the site at least once before, understanding that this was gonna happen tonight, that's all.
It's too little, too little information to make a decision.
I'm sorry?
It's too little information to make any decisions.
I don't know.
Well, the, the, the legal information's here, so that's good, okay, but.
That's the, the minimum required, that's what the town's taking is a legal.
So that, that, that part is, is understood, and that's good, the question I have is, two questions, when is this decision need to be made?
October 21st, so it needs to be made tonight.
Next Monday.
Tonight?
And nine.
So you need to do it tonight.
We need to do it tonight.
Tonight?
Yep, because today is the 16th, and we have, and town meeting is the 21st.
Then I would, then I would recommend you go ahead and do that, it's low risk to do that. The system, it's not exactly, it's not like it's.
Right.
A, a problem area with erosion and you don't, you know, don't already know about it, this.
Yeah, it's a fairly level area.
I'd certainly prefer in the future that you give me a little notice so I can go out and look at it, and say, here's what I'm concerned about or not concerned about, and then I would like, in the future, for, I'd advise Cape and Islands, hey, especially if you guys did the original plan, tell me what's in those drainage easements, so that we know what the town's accepting, so the town has that ability. The town maybe already has that ability, this is part of a subdivision, no doubt, that you already approved. So maybe there's an as-built plan, or at least the original approved subdivision plan for this, so you can obtain that information. That was not asked of Cape and Islands, so I don't wanna beat them up about it, so, but, but typically, that's the kinda thing I would ask. That I would wanna do, if I was advising Catherine, I would wanna help make sure she knew what she was, what she was buying, what she was getting, right? To, to get control and maintenance responsibility of.
Yeah, I would have hoped it was.
Would she approve this?
With this, so.
Ready?
She doesn't have to approve it, the, the town can act independently to take public roads, and then it becomes part of her budget and responsibility to maintain it, right?
I think the town commissioned this plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
The town commissioned this plan, if, if the petition, is the petitioner in the, um, audience? Are you, could, would you, well, this gentleman is saying he's the, he's, he's involved in the petition. So I think that, I think the town paid for this plan, right?
Yeah.
Oh, and if you could, for our recording secretary, your name and address.
Yep, sure, Steve McDonald, 30 Watson Drive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the lead petitioner, and, and I can answer some of those questions, I appreciate you talking about the storm drains. So I've been in that, on Watson for 33 years, and since then, we've had town water put in, it's a private road.
Correct, right.
But it was never really, so, so we've had some issues with the town water, the road sinking and some, or the, the lines were shot across in the main feeders.
So the trenches that were built for the town water, right?
But the, uh, storm drains were there, and the town did work on them when they put the town water in, because they had to undermine to get the, the water lines in, so they're, they're aware of the storm.
The town didn't do that, the water district is a separate government, so.
Sorry.
He's, he's a water commissioner.
We don't do roads.
We're quasi-town, it's quasi-town, so it's municipal, but yeah. We've had gas lines twice, we've had, you know, we had the original gas line, and we just recently had new gas lines put in, and they just patched the road, they didn't, you know, bring it back up to standards, because we're private, we only have 11 residents on the road, so we couldn't, you know, couldn't afford to, to, to push the issue or anything, so the road is in decent shape. We do have drainage issues, but it's more, I think, the storm drains need to be cleaned. I think the storm drains need to be cleaned out more than anything, but they're in place, so...
Do you know whether they're leaching catch basins, or are they solid?
I think they are.
30 years, yeah, they are.
That works for me. Way back.
30 years, they are.
More than 30 years.
Yeah.
More like 40.
So it's like anything else, you need to provide the maintenance for them, and they just need to become part of the, the catch basin cleanout system?
One thing you can notice...
For the town, that the town will do, okay.
I included the town meeting warrant in your packet, and the, the article contains a sum of money, which I assume had to be based on some sort of construction estimates relative to the plan and the drainage that Catherine would have had done by somebody.
To appropriate the sum of $197,920.
Yeah, and there was a, there was a pretty big breakdown of all those costs to get, you know, what that, what that entailed, because I had a conversation with Catherine, and she made it clear that those are estimated costs on the high end.
I assume that was for repaving the road?
She's always on the high end.
Yes.
It was for repaving the road and other things?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so she's...
Free work.
Well, she's way up to speed, way, way ahead of us, so I, I would say you don't have any issues.
All right, is there anybody else from the public that would like to approach the board? So just come up and, thank you for waiting. Just let us know your name and your address.
Sure, I'm Deborah Gemma at 5 Watson Drive. And mostly, I was unable to attend the hearing in May, so I was just hoping to be here and learn a little bit more of like general information about how a road-taking works and the costs. And also, I know the town is in various stages of searing, and if, I don't think our, our street is a high priority for that, but it would seem a shame to...
It was, but it isn't anymore.
It, it would seem a shame to take the road and tear it all up, and then in a very short time, do it all again for sewers. I didn't know if there was any coordinate, well, let's ask that first. Is there any coordination between taking the road and then sewers on that street?
I think your, I think your neighbor knows. And you can both sit up here at the same time if you want.
Sewers for that area were in the original Phase 2 of the dotted plan in 2015, but everything's been moved around, and it's all been kept on the east side of the town. It was supposed to be Phase 2, although it was the whole west side of the town, but, so that would have involved you, but now that's pushed off into, you know, no one.
Catherine addressed that issue at the, the last meeting. It was brought up about the same thing. Are we going to tear up the road and then tear it up again? Putting in sewers, and she said we're pretty far down the road for sewage on Watson Drive, so she didn't, she didn't have any concerns over that issue.
Do you know whether she's doing four inches of asphalt?
I believe yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure because...
Do you want us to introduce ourselves?
No, I can see you now.
Okay, because we've Ed Pesci, who's our engineer, Karen Faulkner, Planning Board member, Michael Richardson, Planning Board member, Mary Wagan, Planning Board, Dennis Belzerini, Planning Board, Dale Oakley, Planning Board, Rob Hanson, Associate Member, and Tom Fadella, our Consulting Town Planner.
Formerly Town Planner since 1984. I retired, and then they dragged me back.
It's nice to put some faces with the names in the papers.
I was also the Chairman of the Sewer Commission for 34 years, so pretty familiar with the sewers.
He's like a wealth of knowledge. If you have another question, try to stump him.
The fact that there's a detailed number in here means they did some work on it.
She's, she's already thought it through.
Right.
You know, just so you all know, typically, just like Oakway Highlands, right? I went and did an inspection. I said, okay, this is what's going on, and that, you know, I involved Catherine in that. Catherine got involved in it. So I, I'd make a recommendation if that became, it looks like it's in the, on the road, on the way to becoming a public road. You know, that's exactly what, you know, I, I'd have the opportunity to advise you. I'd just, in this case, I, I will say, since your time is short and you have the input from DPW, I think DPW, you know, collectively has, has your interests at, at heart and, and interest protected, so I would certainly recommend you go ahead and, and make a recommendation to move forward.
Sounds good to me.
I would, if you were just...
Any more comments?
If you were able to humor me with just a basic description of how, how this process will unfold from here.
Well, how it started was you guys petitioned the town.
I understand.
And they took appropriated $5,000 of town money to prepare the plan for the taking. That's the first step. And that would have been a majority of the people on the street. And then you would have had to take another vote to submit the, the plan after you saw that $197,920, right?
Or enough signatures to move forward.
Yep, and so the last step here is to go to town meeting and have the town meeting voters approve taking the land. It will become a town road and a town liability as far as maintenance goes. But they usually get taken. And the construction, you've got to talk to Catherine when that's going to start.
And that $197,000, that's split between the owners of the road?
Yeah, you're going to get a betterment, but the betterment won't be based on that. It'll be based on what they actually spend, and
And that's the worst case scenario.
Catherine is always high on these numbers, so there's, there'll be less than the 197, I'm sure.
So come to town meeting.
Right, right. And is there, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just was wondering, I think there are 12 owners.
Yes.
What was the vote?
11. The, the 12th one, which is, if you look on a map, I don't, I don't even know why they're on. Their, their driveway doesn't even butt Watson Drive, but...
You're talking Debbie Humana, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a trust, renters. So when we went, went there, I couldn't figure out who the actual owners were to get, you know, sign on or sign off. But we had 11 out of 12 sign the petition.
Oh, okay, well, obviously, it's not like Dennis's area. People really want it.
Yes.
Yeah. I was just curious, so then the, the date of construction is not known, and then does the paying the betterment start with town meeting, or with the end of construction?
After it's constructed and all the bills are in, then you'll have a final number. That'll get divided by 11 or 12, or whatever they're going to do it, and then you'll get a bill, and you'll have the option either of paying it right away or paying it over 20 years with your tax bill.
And this might be outside of your purview, but if, if a homeowner is paying it over the 20 years and then sells the property, are there laws that...
They're obligated to pay that off.
You should have to pay it off, yeah.
Seller has to pay that off.
Because it's, it's a lien on the property.
It's not something that's negotiated.
Until you've paid it off, there's a lien on your property that'll show up in a sale.
Okay, that was, that was one question, so yeah, thank you.
Came to the right place. Does anybody else have any public comments? If no other public comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Shall I move?
There are seconds.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Do you want to make a motion to recommend a town meeting that the town take this road?
I move they do, yes.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. So...
Can I ask a question? Have you approved your minutes from the last meeting yet?
We didn't do it yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
So, Tom, do I need to send a memo in to somebody that, about? Yes, I need to tell the town moderator what we recommend.
Yeah, you can just walk up to them and tell them what the vote was, because you're going to, you're going to speak to town meeting and say that the vote was 5 to 0 in favor of taking.
Yeah, I will do that. Okay. Moving on.
Get the minutes.
The minutes. Okay, so we have the minutes of September 18th, 2024. Anybody have any edits, changes?
I'm hoping we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chrissy, another great set of minutes. I have lost, but now found my agenda. Okay, so that's done. We have public comment? Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Okay. We have the release of remaining inspection fees for Casper Circle.
I gave you a little addition and subtraction in Ed's bill. That's what you're looking for next is this.
Yep. So the amount for release is 225.46?
Yep, that's what's left in the 5,000, assuming the 47.74 is everything, right? All done with Casper Circle.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So we have to take a motion to release the remaining amount of $225.46?
And just, just for the record, there'll probably be some interest attached to that, too.
I'm sorry, say that again? Plus interest.
There'll be some interest, yeah.
And that goes back to the...
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Shall I move?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to sign anything?
I don't have anything for you to sign. If anything was created while I was gone, but...
So what do we do with that vote? You take care of it?
I will go to the Town Treasurer tomorrow, and I will tell him about the vote.
Okay.
Actually, not tomorrow, Friday, when I'm back in. Tell him that he can send the money back to...
Okay, if you need a certificate of, like a certificate of the vote signed, just let me know.
Tell you what, here. I wrote down 5 to 0 to release. Why don't you just put your signature and run it?
I, I've never heard of you needing to do that. I mean, you can just, you don't need a vote to do that.
I'm very picky about the money around here.
I don't know why, but...
Well, I think it's basically saying that you're done.
I did.
Thank you.
You know, because the Treasurer doesn't know that based on the bill he got. Just knows he had $5,044 something that's been spent.
By Dennis? I'm, I'm writing this out formally.
Yes, if Tom just came to you and said, give me a check, you'd probably question whether or not...
Yeah.
No, just...
I don't go through this with my, two other towns I, I consult for. They just say, are you done? Yep, okay, and then they, no more bills? Nope, and they just take care of it. They don't have to vote for the board, they just take care of it. The planning staff take care of it.
Multi-layered finance the property.
Yeah, right. I will, by way of, of introduction on that subject, though, the last, that is one of two invoices that I submitted.
Yep.
You all voted to approve, I don't know, a month ago, a month and a half ago, whenever the last time I was here.
I'll be with me, yeah.
And one of them is not funded. The New Seabury Osprey Court one is not funded because there was not enough money in the account, in your town account, so Tom has asked for some additional funds.
Regulations, which I want to talk about today, but the board regulations, which aren't published, require a $5,000 initial deposit, and then it says, once it gets down to 2,500, they have to replace...
Yeah, it's mostly bringing...
That's exactly how I work with the other communities I work in.
The thing is, the, the, the initial bill was way over the $5,000, so I've asked another $5,000 from the Seabury, knowing that you're going to have to do all kinds of construction inspections on that.
Yeah, once, once they start.
They're apparently got a very strict process for getting the check cut down there, so it's just...
Oh.
It's, it's, it's sitting with our...
I was going to reach out to Tamara and Nick Galanis just to say, you, did you get that information from Tom, and can you take care of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
They got the information. I don't know if they took care of it. And to tell you the truth...
They got to send it down to New York, and I go through a whole process.
It could be that a check came in, and Karen, the former Planning Board Secretary, might have taken it and done something with it, but I...
No.
I didn't get a check.
Did you see this letter?
No, that, that letter is addressed to you, so I did not open it for anybody else. You still have more stuff.
It's called in 53 Markantile Way?
That's our business address, I'm sure, 3916. I'll put that fly in here. I just want to hear what...
Do you want to do that under public comment?
It's not on the agenda? It's under correspondence, we'll have to wait. I'll make xeroxes.
I have to see.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna xerox it real quick. Sorry.
I go over here.
So Karen, how was your trip?
It was the greatest trip I ever took in my life. We stayed in a magnificent villa.
You're going to do it again?
Huh?
You're going to do it again?
Where'd you go?
I... Umbria. Umbria.
Went to Umbria?
Yeah.
Good for you.
Cortona, Montepochino, well, Montepochino was actually just Tuscany. We had a car at the waterfront. And, and we had, you know, we, we never packed our suitcase. We just were there, this gorgeous place, and...
Good weather and everything?
Uh-huh.
Weather, good?
We had like one day of bad weather, but, you know, it didn't deter us because we, we rented cars. And then we took some trips, you know, with the limo. Montepochino was one of them that we took in a season.
Beautiful, huh?
Huh?
Beautiful, right?
It was the greatest.
Then you're going to have to come back.
It is a tree.
Back to tree.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, it's a leaning tree.
Karen.
Watch the video. I had a money better to make sure that I did my camera, that I lost.
No.
It's not on my phone anymore. I thought I emailed it to myself here, but...
All right. Sorry about that.
Request from a person at 48 Gold Leaf Lane.
Okay, okay, yep. Review and decision regarding proposed tree removal at 48 Gold Leaf Lane in the Windchime Point condominium. Okay. Well, thank you, Tom. Is this the, is this the...
These are pictures that were sent to me by the person asking to chop down a tree. That's with other pictures that are this, uh...
This is all of one tree?
What tree I did? It's infected.
Okay.
It has pine beetles in it.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Look at this.
No, but... Just a pitch pine, it would look that quite some time ago.
That tree had pine beetles in it.
Oh, you haven't seen these?
It had the holes.
That's the one that looked at, it was that some time ago, right? The dead one?
So are we good with letting it out?
Yeah.
I can tell you why it's, why it's got an issue.
Because it can be seen from public away.
No, no, no. The person, now, it's not the current owner, that's what you got to talk about here. The current, not the current owner, but a previous owner built this concrete patio in violation of the special permit. None of the, it has, he has a deck and there were stairs down and that's all that was ever approved as part of the site plans. That's why it brought a whole bunch of architects and signs and all of that stuff. And the patio is actually impinging on the tree.
Yep.
And that's why it's leaning that way and it's why it's a little bit unhealthy.
It's leaning that way because that's the way it grew.
So the patio was not approved?
No, it's not. None of the other houses have patios like that.
Uh-huh.
It wasn't this guy. It was like one or two owners previous who had to put that patio in there. And now he's had a patio that's...
Tree is up there.
Pulling up the patio.
Causing a problem with the patio.
Some of the, uh, there's a column of...
Yeah.
So what do you think we should do, Dennis?
Well, I would cut it down. It's one tree. It had the pine holes in it.
It's got the turpentine beetle problem.
Turpentine beetle, yeah.
It's, it's, it looks like it's diseased.
It's gonna go down, it's gonna fall someday.
Well, I saw them and I showed you and you didn't want to look at them.
So can we ask them to replace it?
Yeah, they're gonna replace it.
Well, they'll have to make a decision on that.
All right, I'm sorry. So they're gonna replace it?
I thought it said here.
No, this is, no, this is something completely different.
Oh.
This is something com... Remember the, remember the letter from Mr. Clapper about suggesting that we beef up our bylaws? This is, this, this... So we're gonna talk about that later.
Oh, so, okay.
Right, but I, usually a tree like that, we ask for some type of...
Replacement.
Replacement, okay.
Why is the planning board involved in removing the tree?
Oh, because this was clear cut. Okay? In violation of a, of a condition of a special permit, the contractor, now, this is probably a little bit of urban myth, but it was clear cut. So when they came back to the, so the planning board found out and as a result, they made, the planning board made them go out and tag every single tree to preserve the trees because they weren't supposed to clear cut the trees. So now, whenever they want to cut down a tree, we have to go and inspect it.
With the numbered trees. See, they have that.
It's better not to cut down the trees, guys.
This is the only, this is the only development in Mashpee that has...
No, there's two.
What's the other one?
Southport.
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 I used to go up there all the time.
Southport, I've walked through the woods in Southport with brambles.
But, Southport has been resolved by this committee.
That's true.
The patio...
That's true. They don't have to come back anymore.
Right. They're gonna self-manage.
Good tree.
Well, it was like, I think, I think all the clearing was done.
Yes.
They're, they're built out. They're, they're built out and, uh...
They have to, yeah.
Every single tree there has a number.
Okay, I would recommend since...
Yeah, over four inches, I think was the case. But they, they now have the ability to manage maintaining the trees, except in the wetlands or in the, yeah, wetland areas. And they, yeah, there was quite a bit, you know, they used to come in once a month with a tree list, a numbered list, and then we would approve, approve it and, uh...
Well, it was really funny.
Yeah, they, they, nobody's been abusing the tree, knocking out trees. There's a couple of trees that I've looked at and they've...
All right.
Justified.
You're gonna, you're gonna say yes?
Damn it.
Against my bitter head's honor.
Oh, no. I, I'd like to let them take that tree down. That tree is pretty close to the property and...
No, wait a second. No, that's the, it's nowhere near the building. What's impinged on it was illegally that patio. It's nowhere near the deck. That's why it was not allowed to be taken down in the first place. Somebody built the patio up against the tree.
Sorry, that's not a good excuse then.
But the patio is, you've got a violation that you're endorsing.
It looks awfully close to that building. It looks like if it fell...
It's not, it's not.
It's leaning the...
If the patio is illegal...
It's leaning away from the tree.
He didn't do it.
It's just actually there.
He didn't do it. So if we're not gonna make him take up the patio, we're gonna make him cut down the...
If that tree were to go, will it hit the building?
The patio is illegal.
I get it. I get it.
My tree, the whole tree, all the bricks in this way.
Okay. Could I make a recommendation?
I would love to hear a recommendation.
Let's cut it down.
I think so, yeah. I agree.
The, the person who's trying to grow a clover lawn that looks just horrible, but I'm doing it.
The bunnies are gonna like it, though.
Yes.
No, I got like that.
This, this thing has beetles. It's obviously got a disease. It's not a good-looking tree.
No.
It's listing. He should cut it down.
If you go 20 feet further, there's two trees they took down a couple of years ago. And if you go up further, I counted three trees that they took down that were kind of close.
So what can we replace it with?
Cut down, this, these are evergreens here.
Yeah.
There's really very little space to plant something.
Right.
So let him put another tree, a protected tree, on the property, but not here.
Yep, yep, okay. That's our decision. They have to replace it.
What kind of tree? How big a tree?
There, there, well, so there, usually there, is it horticulturist? Makes a suggestion to us because they don't want a tree that has a heavy sail. They don't want something that is gonna fall.
Right.
And so they have, they have trees that they suggest.
Evergreen or ivy.
Let's have an arborist or whoever they use make the decision where to plant that tree.
Well, they need to come back to us with a suggested tree in a suggested location.
Approved by the arborist.
Well, that, we approve it.
Well, that it's a good place, it's not gonna fall or grow to fall on the house.
Right.
It's, it's, it's a good place.
It will never fall on the house because it's leaning away from the house.
No, I'm not talking about this one.
You can see our turpentine beetle right there. I mean, that tree should be removed, period.
So what we want from them, if they want to remove the tree...
Healthy tree.
They have to suggest with their professional landscaper or horticulturist or arborist, a replacement tree and they need to let us know where they're gonna put it.
Well, then they'll have to come in and you'll have to vote on it.
Yep. Or they can, yeah. They can come in or they can do it via email.
The tree's diseased with what? What's the, what's the disease?
Okay.
Beetle?
Has a...
Do you want to set a size tree, like an eight-inch diameter or 10, you know, to be planted? Because I don't want to...
Let the arborist make a decision.
Well, I mean, he can say, "Plant a piece of grass" and, you know...
You know, a two-year plan.
I, I would call a four-inch tree as a minimal...
Yeah.
Minimum four inch.
And...
At breast height.
At breast height.
Right. And modify the patio so it doesn't impinge on the tree.
Well...
They could have it cut out.
No, they, they'll put the...
The patio itself is totally illegal.
They'll put the tree someplace else.
Oh, we'll put the tree someplace else. They don't even need that.
They'll put the tree someplace else. Because they have, they have like a replanting...
Didn't Shakespeare do a play called Much Ado About Nothing?
I don't want to say, I want to say conceptual plan. We've asked them to come up with a plan. As they take out, they take down these older trees, they're replanting.
Last time they were in, they removed 33 trees during replacement of one.
Who?
Windchime.
When did that happen?
That's what I was told.
No.
Earlier this year.
I was on that job and we made good decisions. There's, they have, I think, three or four years to plant all these trees.
No, they're only planting one to replace the 33 is what the decision was.
You were on it, yeah, right?
The record.
Yeah, I don't remember that. I really don't.
I don't remember 33 trees going down for one. We didn't approve that.
I recall it, but you did, Dr. Thel, though. You know, it worked.
You recall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we looked at every single tree.
That's right, I remember that.
Carefully.
And you had them make replacements?
Every tree.
I don't think it was exactly one to one, but it was, the majority were replaced.
Well, I don't remember anything like 33. I really don't.
I'm gonna hold on this.
Let's go forward here. What are we gonna do?
So we need more information from them. They need to tell us...
Well, you tell, you tell, I'll let them know that you want a tree that's at least four inches diameter, best height and...
As a replacement.
Arborist should make a recommendation, but, uh...
On location and the type of tree.
Yes.
Because, you know, they are just 10 feet away from conservation land back there.
I don't care where on the property they planted it. I honestly don't. You know, if that's not an appropriate place and they were thinking of putting a tree someplace else, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Where's the mow yard?
No.
Come on, let's...
All right. All right, um...
By the way, I should know that I failed our secretary and that I didn't prepare a packet for her, so she has no clue what we're talking about here. I'll give her what I can afterwards.
There's more paper here than a former's tree. Let's just go on.
Yeah.
Come on.
All right. Partial release of covenant for 12 Cypress Circle identified as reserved recreation and green area on the plan entitled Conamet Highlands Subdivision Plan of Land in Mashpee, Mass. Recorded in the Barn School Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 256, page 71. Covenant was previously released on March 20, 2024. Under a different owner name, the registry requires a release under the names of the current owners per town council. Okay.
So in your packets, you have the covenant release and you have your previous release under a one person's name and now they've added a second person to the title. So now apparently you need another release per town council. And I would ask that maybe three or four of you sort of sacrifice your copies to have signed by the board members and I'll take...
So is this just the partial release of covenant? What's this release of covenant agreement Form E? Do we just sign both?
It's a totally different project.
Okay.
I'm talking about these two.
So they, oh, we, we all got to sign it, huh?
Yeah, majority of the board is to sign it.
Right.
I haven't, you've signed the one that you signed in August.
Who, um, how many?
Oh, wait a second, no, you signed it in March.
All right, so is, does anybody have any questions? Are we comfortable taking a vote to sign this partial release of covenants for the property address of 12 Cypress Circle?
We don't have any documentation to support this. All we have is the...
You do. You have the fact that you already released it. The only issue here is that town council's saying they need a new release because they added another name to the title.
Okay, Form E, release of covenant. Okay, could I just read it, please?
Yes.
It was not in the packet that I picked up.
Yeah, there are, all the packets are exactly the same.
Not in the packet that I picked up, that was, you copied for me, or whoever copied it for me.
You're right.
This is not in it.
You're right. So we'll just give you a few minutes to, shh, let you read it.
I haven't been here since last Wednesday, so I didn't have any packets for anybody.
Okay, I understand it. Partial release of covenant.
Would you like to make the motion that we, we...
Yes. I make a motion that the planning board execute the partial release of covenant in the covenant, which was recorded in the Barn School County Registry of Deeds, Book 1644, page 87, identified as reserved recreation and green area entitled, the plan entitled Conamet Highlands Subdivision of Land in Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by William Nye dated March 1, 1972, which plan is recorded in said registry and plan book 256, page 71. Property address, 12 Cypress Circle, Mashpee, Mass. Current owners, Christine Morano and Vincent Morano. Current deed reference, Book 35334, page 57.
Yeah, Vincent is the guy who caused this problem, so you gotta re-sign it because of Vincent.
That was your motion?
That was my motion?
I was second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, thank you.
All right, like I said, if I can get three or four of those autographed by...
Want to sign it now? Are you passing it around? Okay.
Give them all in there.
And get them notarized by Debbie tomorrow.
And we need one of yours, Michael.
You're gonna, you're gonna have mine.
I got, sorry, I...
Send them all, okay?
Thank you, Tom, for working on that.
Well, I mean, it's weird. I never heard of such a thing.
You need two of them? Mary?
We need, uh, right.
Oh, he's got one of them.
Because I'm gonna have to give one to Debbie and I gotta keep one. And I'm gonna have to have that reported by somebody, whoever asked for this. I have no idea who that is except for...
Sign it above, right above.
Yep.
You need to sign that one.
Can you sign this one?
Did I sign? Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
You did, you did. Yep, you're good.
Wonderful. There you go, Tom.
And aerial photos of that tree and everything else.
Yeah.
Sorry, Tom.
Add to my packet.
We'll get a good replacement for it. Okay, next item is release of covenant dated June 1, 2010. For the original five lot, April 21, 2010, version of Willow Bend's Willow Circle subdivision, which was revised to six lots by plan dated December 13, 2021, whose covenant was released on January 18, 2023. Okay, so what's going on with this one?
Well, um, apparently we had a five-lot Willow Circle plan, which had a covenant recorded on it. And then the board went and decided to turn it into a six-lot Willow Circle plan for which a covenant was recorded. Let me, let me read what Jack McElhinney's saying here. Attaching the release of covenant dated January 18, 2023 for Willow Circle. It released a December 13, 2021 covenant for the six-lot Willow Circle plan. However, there is also an outstanding covenant from June 1, 2010 that related to the original five-lot plan for this area before it was reconfigured to six lots by the modified subdivision plan in 2021. The bank that recently financed the purchase of one of the completed homes came across this in its title search and has requested that we have the 2010 covenant also released, either by a separate instrument or added to the form used in 2020. I'm attaching the three documents referenced, could you discuss with Evan, blah, blah, blah? Evan's not here anymore. So what this is, is you've already released the covenant on the six-lot version of this plan, but you had a five-lot previous version that had a covenant recorded. So it's almost like the last one where you've already released the covenant on the road in terms of the technicalities. It's just, he needs this one to satisfy the, the bank that there isn't another covenant that's gonna impinge on, you know...
I accept that explanation. And a motion to sign this release of covenant agreement.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need more than one?
If I could get you guys to do three or four of them and sign them all and I'll take care of, uh...
Right here, huh?
You guys, right here, yeah.
Say again?
Yeah. You, you want them back?
We still get them.
That's complete?
Yeah.
That's to Tom?
Yep, let's go to Tom. Nope, that's trash.
Perfect. I was just gonna look at my previous list. Right.
Okay. Very timely. Project reviews and inspections by our board engineer. Anything to report to us, sir?
So just one, one quick thing to report. I did reach out, planning to come to this meeting, reach out to Jacque Moran because he had asked, or he had told me before our last meeting in September that he was going to offer as a goodwill gesture to patch the potholes in Blue Castle Drive.
That's great.
Which he did today.
That's great.
Sent me pictures of it today. I was on the vineyard today on another project. I didn't have a chance to look at it. He sent me pictures of basically about a half dozen sites. He sent me pictures of basically about a half dozen sites. He filled them with gravel, not with hot mixed asphalt. The gravel is essentially recycled asphalt, so it won't last. But he said as a goodwill gesture, he decided to do it anyway. He committed to that yesterday when I texted him saying, hey, did you ever do that stuff? You said you were gonna send me pictures. He goes, you know, Ed, no, I didn't, but I'm gonna do that. I, I told you I would and I will, assuming my truck gets out of the shop, which it did. And he took care of it today, so. That, and there is one other active project.
So how long will that kind of last?
Depending on the amount of storm.
Storms.
Effort we have, but, you know, it'll last another month.
Yeah.
It'll be visible for another few weeks and another month, probably. But after another month or so, six weeks, eight weeks, you probably see some of it, but it'll still not last, you know, depending on how much traffic it's done.
If it rains in traffic, it'll go fast.
We have torrential rain.
Depends.
Yeah, right.
Some of it'll stay, some of it won't, but I also am inspecting, we did some inspections recently at seventy seven Echo Road, not your project. It's a zoning board project, but it's a commercial, small commercial project on Echo Road. So that's it, right now. I do, driving here today, do need to reach out to Country Club Estates, to Mr. Marston's. Marston to talk about where they stand with a few things that they were doing there. They got some paving done and some roadway work done, but then they shut down and I just don't know what their plans are. So I have to reach out to their construction superintendent. And I will do that just to find out what they're doing, but there's really nothing else that's.
That road goes pretty far in now.
Yeah, it does, it does. There's a couple of, there's a new cul-de-sac that they built.
Yeah.
And the complete piping and utility infrastructure is in, but not all the drainage was completed. In other words, the, the, the piping would discharge to a, to a proposed detention basin, but the basin was just dug out.
Yeah.
Wasn't, it wasn't graded perfectly or anything. So all the water's going someplace and being captured, but it's not finished yet. So, you know, our job was to get out there, make sure he was putting all the sewer infrastructure, excuse me, the stormwater infrastructure and, and what you might call it, infrastructure, the water system and gravel base down and the base paving down. So they did do all that. I was hoping they would have loomed and seeded the side slopes better by now, but they haven't. And they haven't finished dressing up the discharge locations in those various little drainage many areas. So they're not causing any major erosion issues, there's no major problems, but it just needs to be finished. That's it.
Okay. And then there was that bill that was over five thousand. Did we approve to pay that bill?
Yes, you already approved paying it, but then when I went to the treasurer to get it paid, they didn't have enough money. Actually, it was Karen who tried to get it paid and the system told her we only had five thousand.
Okay.
Even though we had.
We have a point, we don't have to take any action.
Application fees, which I didn't know why we couldn't use that.
But we don't have to take any action on that?
No, other than did, did. I've already requested another five thousand dollars from New Seabury to continue paying Ed and to pay off this bill, but as far as I know, I haven't received it yet.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, he. Tom mentioned that earlier, that was to cover future construction inspections and just keep the, you know, again, what Tom mentioned earlier was you would ask for a, you know, a proposed peer review fee, basically an engineer review fee, and then if it drops below a certain amount, you replenish it. And that's what other communities do, it's a very common thing.
That's exactly what our regs say, but you blew past the whole amount before we got signed.
Well, unfortunately, because of everything that happened in that project, it went on and on and on, so. But.
Okay, but, all right.
Usually it doesn't get that expensive.
Get that paid.
Yeah, I mean, the last one was forty seven something.
I, I'm gonna reach out, just full disclosure, I'll reach out to Mr. Galanos tomorrow and email him, just say, hey, are we all set? Like you said, maybe there's some, if, there's some red tape involved in doing that.
I'm sure there is right now.
But in the future, your applications, your, your applicants should show up with a check in hand. They do that in other communities.
That's what they did. They showed up with the required five thousand dollar check.
It's already in the treasurer's account, but when, when Karen went into the system
to try to pay the sixty, whatever, six thousand something dollar check, it said, sorry, all we got is five thousand, we can't pay it.
It does happen.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for working, and thanks to Karen Leslie for working on that too. All right, so if Ed's done, I'll go do the chair's report. So I did meet with Rodney Collins, our town manager. We spoke about advertising for the new staff for the, the planning department, it looks like.
When was that?
This was like, I think, four weeks, this is since our last meeting.
Okay, cause yeah, I mean, like, two weeks ago, he said he had advertised both that and the secretary position.
Mm-hmm. I didn't see, I saw the secretary's position, the administrative assistance position up on the bulletin board. I didn't see the town planner, but anyways, we discussed, you know, going forward with the HPP. He now knows that the housing committee needs members in order to start meeting again.
Not necessary for the housing production plan. They didn't have anything to do with creating the previous ones, they're just.
They were very integral in this round.
Yeah.
And he said that he, the people that need to vote on the HPP has to have a positive vote from this board and the select board, and he was gonna talk to the chair of the select board. My suggestion was to bring it to the planning board, edit it the way we want, get it approved, send it to the select board. So he was gonna check with Chair Sherman to see if that was appropriate. Rodney.
Rodney.
But I haven't checked it.
It has to be approved by this board, so how would there be any question?
I'm, I'm suggesting to him that we spearhead the, 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 the work at this point.
First, yeah.
So I haven't heard back from him, I'm sorry, I didn't check in with him. The LCP is under review by the Cape Cod Commission, I'm sorry, I didn't check with them. They were supposed to give us comments by now. He, Rodney knows about that.
It's also backward, you know?
Well, that's what this board decided to do, was it had, I can give you a long summary, but there was a point where it was written and we came, there was a suggestion from a board member to send it to the Cape Cod Commission before we started working on it much more, make sure we're going in the right direction. So they, they have drafted the plan to, to give us, make sure we're on the right track.
But I mean, we write, we decide what we want in our comprehensive plan. I mean, they don't tell us how to do our own plan.
They need to certify it in the end.
They'll need to certify it in the end, but I mean, they didn't have anything to do with creating the existing plan. They just outlined what had to be in it. And we created it, and the planning board approved it, and town meeting voted on it.
Well, that's what happened, so let's just go forward.
Finally, it's the last step to the Cape Cod Commission for certification.
Well, I think we, if I recall, we didn't want to go any further. We wanted to make sure we were right on track with it, that, kind of knowing that they're gonna certify it.
At the end.
Yeah.
They're gonna certify whatever it is.
Okay.
Well, maybe so.
Well, we'll get some, we'll get some preliminary feedback, so that's what's going on with that. The reason replaced by law, I'm, I'm a little, I think we need a professional to help us through that. I don't, I have two ideas, you guys let me know. I can ask Rodney to see if KP Law can help us, help us with a land use attorney. Or I can reach out to Dan Fortier, he's the retired planner from the town of Dennis, to see if he is interested in helping us with that project. Like, reach out to other planners. So what do you guys think, KP Law?
KP.
Okay, good, I'll ask, thank you, that's, okay. So I'll ask Rodney.
You'll have to tell them what you're trying to accomplish, because you got defeated last time because people were opposed to what you were trying to accomplish.
It wasn't our article, it was a citizen's petition.
I know, but I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, so. But I, I.
Like I said, anybody can write it, as long as you know what you want to say. I could write it in five minutes.
It's complicated, I think.
I'm finding it's very, the input.
Politics are complicated, not, not the language.
Right, well, I think that the, the input from the, the people that live there is complicated.
Applies all over town.
So that, I mean, I think the workshop was good in that we were able to have a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
And get a lot of feedback, but it is kind of at the point where I think we need a land use attorney to help, or a land use professional, okay. Thank you very much, okay, town planner report.
Yeah, I, I sort of mentioned it before, was back in twenty twenty two, you, in twenty twenty one, you amended your both special permit and subdivision regulations to create the five thousand dollar deposit rather than the detailed numbers that you used to have based on, you know, square feet of this and linear feet of roads and all the rest. But then you amended that, and that's what's posted on your website from twenty twenty one. But thinking like five or six months later, you amended that to add this thing about twenty five hundred dollars. And that never got posted on your website, so I wanna confirm that that's, you know, confirm that you did that, and have copy of what you did. And I guess give me direction to figure out who could put the updated version on the, on your webpage, cause it's created, it created a problem actually with New Seabury. Ed, when I first asked for another five thousand from Tamara, she read the special permit regs that are posted on town plan's webpage, and they don't say anything about replacing the five thousand. So that was something that was amended, but never included in your, in your regulations when Evan was here, so.
So yeah, so I think, go ahead. And do that, and I would, I, my, my recommendation is ask Stephanie Coleman. If she, if she has access, she, she can put that up on the website. We used to go to.
I don't know who goes to who, but, yeah.
Yeah, well, I would go right to the town manager's office. Yep. Thank you for doing that. Board member committee reports. Cape Cod Commission, I, I don't have any report. The one Cape was well worth attending. I just went one day. And I, I, I really enjoyed it, and that was good. Otherwise, oh, they, they had a meeting today in Orleans regarding a land trust for affordable housing, a regional land trust on affordable housing. Unfortunately, I couldn't go, cause we had our meeting tonight, a lot of other planner, planning boards had meetings tonight, so, but I think, I think somebody from my workplace went, so if I get an update, I'll let you know. It's something that, I forget if we made comment on it, but it's something that I'm hoping that if a land, a regional land trust is created, that there's a requirement that the host community has to approve the project. Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so, why don't I, do, do you think we could take a vote to make that our comment about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good comment.
Yeah, you wanna take, make a motion that we submit comment to the Cape Cod Commission that any housing land, housing or land trust, that's regional. A regional housing or land trust creating affordable housing must have.
Approved by the host community.
Community for any activity within that committee, any, any activity in that community.
Yes, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, so I'll, I'll send that comment in. Great, thank you. Charter review committee meets on the twenty eighth. And we, we, there are certain sections of the charter that need to be changed by an elected charter commission. That involves changes to town meeting, town manager, or the select board. But the rest of the charter can be changed, suggested changes can be made by petition article or a charter review committee. So onward, we still have work to do. There was a little snafu, we thought we were gonna have to stop all of our work, but we can continue. A community preservation committee, we meet tomorrow. We're getting a informational talk from KP Law Town Council regarding Article ninety seven. So Article ninety seven, when a town puts land into conservation or takes it for open space or conservation, the town cannot just do what they want with it, right? They can't, they can't take off that label of, or restriction that keeps it open space or conservation land. And that's by an amendment to the constitution under Article ninety seven. So it's kind of called Article ninety seven land, so the.
It also applies to any open space you set aside on a special permit as a condition.
Yes. So this discussion came up with, and it came up for me to the community preservation committee, cause I was concerned about some, some land bank land that the town voted to donate to the tribe, right? But it was land bank land, so I was like, well, what's going on with this Article ninety seven? Doesn't that apply? And with these purchases, these expensive purchases of open space, should we be, should we be wrapping those in to an Article ninety seven process?
Say it again, Mary, cause I'm.
So when you, when you have, let's say you have a piece of conservation land, right? And for whatever reason you, the, the town has identified a need for this land and we need to take the conservation restriction off, for whatever reason, right? You can't just do that by town meeting vote. Whatever your action was to make it conservation land, to undo that, it's, it's a bigger process. And if I, if I remember, if I recall correctly, it's a, it's a meeting, affirmative vote by the conservation commission, board of selectmen, town meeting, it then goes up to the state house and it has to, has to have a two thirds vote by both the House of Representatives and the senate. I don't know if it needs a governor.
And has to be approved by the governor.
It does, does, okay, it has to be approved by the governor.
In other words, this is made.
You better be darned.
Impossible to, and you have to replace it.
And you have to replace it with new open space.
With same.
So you better be darned sure you want open space when you vote for that.
Right, and so the community preservation committee is in the process of considering acres and acres of new open space. So I was like, okay, well.
How do they find it?
Do we have any, do we have, it's in the, it's in the warrant.
Two point eight million.
So we're kind of like, is there any Article ninety seven land we need to, to look at? So we're, town council is coming to give us a training on that and maybe make a plan for anything like that.
I have, I've actually put together a whole package, and there is a specific description of the process you have to go through in order to, I, I printed out them all. I wish I'd brought them to the meeting, I could have given you it tonight.
You can, if you get those to me, my meeting with the CPC is tomorrow, I would, I'm sure we would love to share those.
Yeah.
I just don't want, you see what I'm saying? If we're gonna, if we're planning.
See it tonight.
To buy land, and there's a, there's another department that needs Article ninety seven, like, we better be coordinated, you know, so.
I just think, that stops us from getting affordable housing. I mean, there's not enough land, if you put all these restricted that we. I mean, I like to take some of that land we buy and build some affordable housing, and, you know, maybe in the front of it, but what you're saying to me, why don't you put it in there?
Yeah.
That's solid there, we never could change it.
The town, the town has.
Point, buying it for open space.
Has three spots.
Yeah, but we want affordable housing.
Three spots.
Then buy something else for affordable housing with money.
Well, one oh nine Commercial Street needs to get its title clear. There's two oh nine Old Barnstable.
Yeah.
And then there's the.
Two oh nine Old Barnstable doesn't have any kind of conservation restrictions on it.
No, he's asking what, what spots have we identified for affordable housing?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, two oh nine's been there for like fifteen years.
There's that, and then there's the, is it Sampson's Mills? I don't know, there's, so there, so the Affordable Housing Trust is, is working on at least three spots of either town owned land or land that the town is interested in that could become affordable housing.
There's also.
I know what you mean, and we consider that.
There's not much land on the Cape, and we talk about affordable housing. You're never gonna get it, just talk, 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 set up committee.
Well, we used to have affordable housing, Dennis, back in the eighties, everything was affordable. Now it's just, all the land's been built up, so there's no land left to build anything new. And what gets built are these monster homes.
Plus, we don't have a committee, we don't even have a committee anymore.
Saying that, we definitely need new members for Affordable Housing Committee. So if you, in your, as everybody does their, their work in Mashpee, if you identify somebody who's looking to help the town, we need members to apply for the Affordable Housing Committee, because they don't have quorum, so.
Quorum, they don't have anybody.
I think there's still one member.
No, it's the last, it last.
Noel?
That was in the newspaper.
Right, but Noel resigned?
Where were the last person?
There are no members anymore.
I don't want to misspeak, but I have a feeling there's one person that did not submit a letter of resignation.
Next committee member.
Anyways.
Okay.
Um, design review.
No meeting.
Okay, plan review. Okay, environmental oversight committee.
Uh, yeah, we met on the thirtieth, not, not really any updates, we're still plugging along, solidifying the mission statement, vision, vision statements and all that, but they did, they mentioned your name.
Did I send you guys the sample RFP?
I don't think so.
For an open, okay, I will make sure. I will make sure that I send that to you. So I got a sample RFP for an open space and rec plan update.
Yep.
And it looked pretty good, so I will send that to you guys, okay, will do.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
It'll be.
Okay, correspondence, a letter to chair from Mr. and Mrs. Clapper regarding Capewide Construction Project. This is fifty three Mercantile Way, but I think it's at fifty six, sixty eight. So this nice gentleman has been waiting, why don't you come up? I think it's okay if you come up and talk to us about this.
By the way, was that a planning board project or ZBA?
No.
Oh.
It was Roger Brooks, Capewide Construction. The ZBA hearing was seven twenty seven, twenty two, which project, when, when these trees in particular were discussed. What I, I met with Dave Morris.
So, oh, say your name for, for the record.
Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction.
Okay, thank you.
I met with Dave Morris on site when it came to our attention that Mr. Clapper had a question about what we did. As soon, I was actually on vacation when Mr. Clapper came to the site the afternoon we installed the trees in question. There's, there were thirteen trees on the plan as part of the, in, that was on the plan. We agreed during the hearing as a gesture of goodwill that we would add some trees along the property line, that there's a seventy five foot town owned buffer between his property and, and the property that we were working on. And then, so, and then his property is behind there. there. The, if you watch the video, the spirit of the whole back and forth was do what you did at Franny Labs ten or twelve years prior. I think it's now fourteen years. Joao Juncara, the owner of the company, I was not at, that was Cape Wide Enterprises that built that building. Regardless, Joao built Franny Labs, and they installed white pines, ten feet on center.
They don't have residential houses behind them, though.
Huh?
It doesn't have a residential neighborhood behind it.
No, sugar pine circles kind of stopped before Franny Labs, but they liked the buffer that those white pines provided. So he wasn't sure exactly the size, exactly what they were, but during the hearing, it got recorded as eight-foot trees, eight foot on center. Well, what we did is, they, a white pine shouldn't be that close. So I went and I met, I had laid them out-
You should see my father's backyard, he's got a hedge of white pines, believe it or not.
Well, there you go, and they probably invade each other, and so, we talked to the people, Bigelow Nurseries that we were buying them from, they said twelve to fifteen feet apart. So I had laid them out at eight feet, and it just looked way too tight. I went next door to Franny Labs, measured all those trees, they're all nice straight, they're ten feet on center. So that's what we did, because the spirit of the back and forth was do what you did at Franny Labs. So, and we weren't sure exactly during the hearing where they were. So we, yes, he's correct, the condition said eight feet on center, but if you watch the hearing, a number of times Chairman Bondi said, please remember, sir, they don't have to do this at all, they're doing this out of goodwill. So we continued to do it out of-
But it was a written condition.
But it's a written condition, so mandated now.
But in the spirit of it, it was do what, it was, or do what you did at Franny Labs.
So anyways, I talked to Mr. Clapper, and so he said that he was gonna reach out to your company.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that happened.
Building Department stepped in, David Morris has met with him, or spoken with him, and feels that what we did was more than appropriate.
So this letter is dated September twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright.
And he does say something about the light. I didn't know, the, the project was finished, I don't remember the exact date, just after Labor Day. Prior to this, the project was turned over to the owner, he has sold the units off, and there is a wall pack on the back of the building. During construction, I had made sure the light, as soon as we got power, I had made sure that those lights weren't coming on at all. At some point, when the owner took over, the lights got flipped on, and I don't believe the timer has been fully set. I will talk to the owner about it. I actually stopped on my way here to make sure that they, the wall packs are completely off, the timer is turned off. There were two walk door lights that are on, those are required by code. Those have daylight sensors on them, so they only come on when it's dark out, but those are small little lights over the doors.
So that would be good, if you can look at the lighting.
And I actually have the electrician coming tomorrow, and at our cost, I'm gonna have him disconnect that wall pack, so even if they do turn those on, he's looking to see if he can get a shield for that light, but for the time being, we're gonna make sure that light, that big light does not come on.
So Mr. Clapper, Mr. and Mrs. Clapper are relatively new Mashpee residents, they're super nice. Anything you, I would recommend you checking in with them, checking in with the light, the light situation, checking in with them, and just do whatever you can. I understand, yeah.
We've gone above and beyond with putting the expensive trees in, and-
Yeah.
Except it doesn't meet your, doesn't meet your special permit condition. It says eight feet.
But if you look at the-
And your permit.
Lesson learned.
Please, just watch the video.
No, I know, I know.
It shouldn't have been written in there anyway, because it wasn't, it was something we agreed to.
I know, it's kind of weird, 'cause we always leave the, our public hearings open, so that the applicant can actually see the decision written up before, in case something like that, but-
I asked Mr., we, we, we suggested he watch the video and go watch what he asked for.
Hi there, this is a zoning board of appeal issue, why are we even talking about-
Because Mr., because Mr. Clapper wrote us, and I've talked to him, and you were here.
He was copied along with the selectmen and-
No, I've talked to him, but you, you know that it, it's, it's wonderful to have that great, wonderful relationship with the unbothered, so.
You don't need, you don't need the extra stress of another-
Right. But thank you, thank you for your time.
To hear what-
Okay.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye.
Have a good evening.
And then this is, so I get the Board of Appeals' agendas now, from the Board of Appeals, with comment that if you have any, if you have any comments about these issues, to send them before the meeting. Now, this is the meeting of November thirteenth. I know that Evan used to send in-
Thank you.
-comments for every single application. I don't think that-
I don't even read them.
We need to do that, but it's something to think about.
I think he would go to site plan meetings, that's what he would do, provide comments on them.
Is that what he would do?
That's what he would do.
Okay. Alright.
I get these too.
Do you?
Yeah.
Oh, because, because why?
I don't know, I get them all.
No, I have been recently added.
Oh, I got, I've got them all for years.
Okay, great. We're gonna continue with the, anything else in correspondence that's noteworthy? If not, I'll accept a-
So be it.
Motion to adjourn.
So be it.
Did we approve the minutes from last time?
Oh, yeah.
Last meeting?
Yeah.
We did.
Oh, we did?
We didn't do that.
Yeah. We did, right?
Oh.
We did.
Didn't you hear me go? Chrissy, you did another good job. I mean, it got brought up like five times during the meeting.
I have a motion to the board.
Alright, well, all in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.